Good afternoon, good evening everyone. My name is Malik Joshie and I have the privilege to serve as the President and CEO of Meredith's Health. Thank you for joining this virtual town hall to talk about COVID vaccines. First of all, a happy spring to everyone as we're starting to see some nice weather and coming out of obviously a long winter and maybe a long year as well. I'm joined by a number of panelists who are here to answer your questions, experts in the field and incredible community leaders and physicians and I'm just very thankful for the opportunity to work with them here at Meredith's Health. So just to give you a little bit again, I'm going to introduce all the panelists. We're going to ask you to send in your questions. You can either type the questions into the Q and A box or text your question to 240-291-6828. You can text your question to the cell number 240-291-6828 or type it right into the Q and A box. Again, I'm happy to join with Dr. Aaron George, the Chief Medical Officer for Meredith's Health, Dr. Kezia Ellison, Family Medicine Resident here at Meredith's Health, and Dr. Mohammed Ali, Infectious Disease Physician here at Meredith's Health. Obviously, we all have felt the effects of COVID for many, many months. We certainly do not want to lose sight of the people who have lost their lives over the past year in this incredible pandemic and we think about that and remember them. We are certainly in a better place than we were just three months ago. We're here in Washington County. We were hitting close to 20% positivity rate, almost 100 patients in the hospital with COVID-19. Today, we still are hovering around 20 to 25 patients in the hospital with COVID-19, still well over 300 cars getting COVID-19 testing at our Creighton Boulevard facility, but we have the vaccine and we've been at it for a few months. And as you know from the state of Maryland's efforts, it's opened up. And so we want to use this opportunity to really talk about the vaccine, talk about any questions and get us all to think about that because when it's your turn and it's all of our turns now, we want to get vaccinated so we can get back to normalcy as best as possible. So that's our goal. I look forward to your questions, our panel does, and we'll kick it off. And I'll start with all of them and just ask, have you gotten your shot and why? Dr. George?
Sure. Really, it's nice to meet all of you. I'm really happy that you've taken the time to join us tonight. I'll share with you, I was reflecting that about a year ago, we were sitting in just these conference rooms and saying, once we get the vaccine, I think that's the horizon that we need. And it feels so good to be on the other side of that. I'll share that when I had the opportunity to get the vaccine, I thought about my patients, I thought about my family, and I thought about my friends, I thought about my neighbors. I've been avoiding my neighbors and walking around the neighborhood because I'm worried about seeing them and worried about if I could spread it if I were to become sick. So it was absolutely with joy that I got my vaccine a couple of months ago. And I thought every time I see a patient, every time I see my neighbor, I'll feel just a little bit more comfortable, that we would have a little bit risk, lower risk of spreading it. So for me, the moment I had the chance to get it, I was really excited too.
Right. Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. George. Again, I'm Kezia Ellison, a Family Medicine Resident. And as a physician in training, I got the COVID vaccine for my patients, specifically the youngest of patients. We take care of newborns up through the senior population and we know that people at either end of the spectrum are at very high risk. So my vaccine was so that I can care for them, whether in the skilled care nursery that we have here or the hospital floors or in our hospital clinic at Robinwood.
Dr. Ali?
Hi, this is Ali. I'm the Infectious Disease Physician. I must tell you, I was anxiously waiting for this vaccine since the start of the pandemic. And I was so happy when the vaccine came out. And I knew that this is the only way to stop this pandemic. And I got the vaccine very happily. I had no side effects with both doses. And when I was getting my vaccine, of course, I considered my safety, my patient's safety, my family members and my community around me. So I'm very happy that I got it and I want everybody else to get it too.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Ali. You mentioned it a little bit. What about side effects? What did you all feel?
Yeah, I'll share for myself. I, you know, heard stories, because I'm sure many of you did or have, about feeling a fever or a headache in the days afterwards. And I, so I was still eager to get it. That night when I went to bed, I remember thinking, I was like, oh, there needs to be a little bit something there. The next day, my arm itself was a little bit sore, but I didn't have any fever, didn't really have any fatigue, I was able to exercise. And then by the second day after the vaccine, I was mostly back to my normal self and that soreness had gone away. So I, for both doses, felt mostly myself was fine.
Yeah. That's similar experience that when I have the vaccine, I tend to get sore in flu vaccine shots. So my arms sore for a little longer than yours, probably because you exercise your arms more than I do. But I did have the soreness. I did also notice a few swollen lymph nodes, all just signs of our immune system working and the vaccine starting to take effect. But afterwards, I felt fine and similarly, the second dose, I tolerated very well and was able to go about my day.
Great.
Yeah, I'm actually envious. I wanted to experience some side effects, but I did not, I did not experience any.
Well, then I'll give you this question that was typed in. Does the vaccine really work?
The answer is yes. I mean, there are clinical trials that suggest all these three vaccines are quite effective. Now, some, one vaccine may have shown slightly lower efficacy than the others, but remember that efficacy in the trials is different from the real world scenarios and it is not equal to the effectiveness. So, and the third vaccine that was tested on the variant strain may actually might be equally effective as the first two vaccines, which are Pfizer and Moderna. So all these vaccines, the one thing is for sure is they prevent mortality and serious COVID pneumonia. That's for sure, because we have not seen a single case of mortality or ventilator dependence after the COVID vaccine.
Yeah, I think it's worth offering. A lot of times, my patients will ask me, well, when I get it, will I be totally protected? And we look at, and we turn about, are they effective? Do they work? We think about that in terms of, will I be immune from getting COVID or not? But the actual value of the vaccine goes beyond just the immunity. We know that most of the vaccines give about a 95% improvement and protection so that you wouldn't transmit the virus itself. But beyond that, they do reduce the risk of having severe cough, severe illness, needing to be hospitalized, and there have been no deaths reported related to the vaccine or related to hospitalization from severe illness with these vaccines. So it goes beyond just the risk of transmitting it, which is really good, but for those few people that can get it, maybe 3% or 5% after the vaccine, they have shown that they've had just mild symptoms for the most part.
So that leads into another question that we get. Which vaccine should I get, Dr. Ellis, if you want to try?
So I literally had that question this morning from a patient in my inbox and spoke to her today and said that whatever vaccine you have access to, that's the one that you should get, whether it's Moderna, Pfizer, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson, as Dr. Ali shared. The key is to be vaccinated and we're happy that now in our actual office, we have, are able to offer some vaccines as well. This is an extension of what Meredith's has already been doing with getting the population vaccinated. So whatever you have access to, please get your vaccine.
Great. And I think it's also worth just offering that all the vaccines have basically the same premise. They inject a component that stimulates our immune system, almost as if you got COVID but without any virus or any infectious components at all. It's just a small little piece of the COVID virus that's not infectious and doesn't actually cause any symptoms or even stay in the body. So what it does is inject this small little piece, and we like to consider that like a playbook. It's almost a recipe that teaches your immune system how to be prepared for COVID if you were to get it. And when you look in individuals, two weeks after getting the vaccine, all of those components that are given have actually been mostly washed out of the system. So it's almost like it teaches our immune system how to fight it off, but it doesn't leave any traces.
Yes, great. Now, Dr. Ali, the question is, what if someone misses receiving the second dose of a vaccine? Are they still protected?
That's a very good question. If you received only one out of the two doses, you're still protected, but not to the extent when you get the two doses. Now, if you, if you miss, for example, the second dose of Pfizer, you can still get up until 42 days from the first dose. So it's not too late. If you have missed it, you can still get the booster. And, but the answer to that question is yes, you're still, the vaccine is still effective, but not the 95% to 98%. It might be lower than that with single dose.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ali. So related to that also, is this going to be once and done or will we be getting this vaccine every year like the flu shot?
That's again, another good question. We don't know the exact answer to this. The preliminary data from all the vaccine efficacy and the duration of efficacy is that these vaccines are good for beyond six months. And you know, the data is still coming, so it may be beyond more than one year or two. So if we can break this pandemic, if we could get about 80% of the population vaccinated before you start seeing the variant strains, then you may not need the booster. But there are certain variants strains emerging, so the vaccine companies are studying against the variant strains and they may offer boosters on people who have already received vaccines. So that might come in the future. But everything is all preliminary at this time.
Great. Thank you. So some people have brought up, I've had previous reactions and others, does that mean I should not get the COVID vaccine?
Well, it depends on the type of reaction. If you have had a severe NFL active reaction or a serious reaction, which is considered as respiratory problems within four hours of the vaccination, bad enough for you to visit the emergency room, then that's considered as a serious reaction. And the reaction has to be from one of the components of this COVID vaccine. The two most common components are the polyethylene glycol and polysorbates. Polysorbate is the one that's associated with the Johnson &amp; Johnson and polyethylene glycol is one associated with Pfizer and Moderna. So if you had severe allergies to components of these vaccines, then you should avoid it. But overall, if you look at the data, for the Pfizer, 4.7 adverse reactions out of a million doses, that is still quite low. And that's even lower for the other vaccines. The Johnson &amp; Johnson, I think, has the lowest one.
I think it's also worth pointing out, some patients will come and ask me, I had a reaction to the flu shot last year, should I get the COVID vaccine? And actually, what they found is because these vaccines are created just a little bit differently, any previous reactions from other vaccines that you had as a kid or you've had in past years, wouldn't really necessarily translate to COVID at all. So they didn't actually find any side effects that were consistent between old vaccines and COVID. So even if you've had some small side effects in the past, there's no reason to expect it with COVID.
Great. Thank you. So we have a question come in. I have heard some people still get COVID after they've had the shot. Why?
Okay, I'll take this too.
I will give you my basic answer that I tell the patients and you can use your expertise to add the details, but essentially, I like to always refer to the flu shot because most people are familiar with that, is that a patient will say, oh, I got the flu from a flu shot. Likely, you already had the virus in your body and that's why you feel that you are sick. But I also like to share with people that most of the symptoms that people talk about after being vaccinated are simply your immune system working. So for those of us who feel the R makes, the chills, the fevers, all of that is our immune system working, right? So when we feel those symptoms, we're worried, we're concerned, but it really means that we're having that response. Now, some of us, like Dr. Ali, are lucky enough not to feel it, but that doesn't mean that our body is not working and mounting the immune response. So I think it's really the concept that this is not a live vaccine, okay? So there, as Dr. George shared, there's not a chance of getting COVID-19 from being vaccinated. But the point is, if you've heard of someone who has become severely ill, that is, you know, not a, in developed pneumonia or what have you, it was likely because the timing was off. Is that a okay explanation?
Yeah, yeah, that's, and also, there are reports of some cases of actual COVID infection after the first dose of the vaccination, but very few after, two weeks after the second dose of vaccination. The numbers are very, very small. So, and those cases have been very mild and they are not severe enough to stay in the hospital for too long. So the COVID vaccinations are excellent against preventing severe COVID. They may not be 100% effective against preventing mild COVID. So you have a very little chance of, say, 4% to 5% chance of getting a very mild infection from the vaccine, after the vaccine.
And I think this leads into the second question that comes from this is, once you get the vaccine, can I stop wearing a mask? And so I think the best way to think about this is, if the vaccines are 95% effective, that means if you went to a party, somebody had COVID, you'd have about a 1 in 20 chance of getting it, right? So I mean, just considering it that way. So if there's still a 1 in 20 chance, until we get enough people at those parties to get vaccines, and we all want to get back to partying for sure, we have to keep masking, we have to keep being careful with social distancing. And so the ultimate goal is, right now, we have 20% of our community here that's vaccinated. We would love to get 70%. And I'm confident that if we had 70% of our community vaccinated, we could party a heck of a lot more.
So the message is do not let your mask down, even if you are vaccinated. It's still critical to prevent any spread of COVID.
Absolutely. And which is why, those of you who can see us, we're all wearing our masks here, even though we've been vaccinated.
Now, here's a question that someone typed in. For those that have had COVID, will the side effects be more severe if they receive the vaccine?
Actually, I'll offer an interesting point. I was speaking with one of the COVID-19 experts at John Popkin today. They presented here at Meredith's on what we're seeing as long COVID syndrome, maybe some of you have seen this in the news. And these are individuals that may have had COVID three months ago or six months ago, but they're still having a loss of taste, a loss of smell, maybe a headache. And there's actually a clinic at John Popkin to help try to care for some of these long-term symptoms of COVID. And what they found is that for those patients that have had the vaccine, they've actually found a lot of them getting better, that a week or two after getting the vaccine, they've been feeling that those symptoms have improved. We're not really sure why, but if you've had COVID before and once you get through that initial fever, that first week or two, it is safe to get the vaccine, certainly after 30 days after you've been infected, as soon as the fever goes away.
So I would like to add one more point here. In response to that question, so initially, I think in the beginning of the vaccination and in the initial stages of this COVID, there were some cases where if they received vaccination within 90 days after getting the COVID infection, they had slightly more side effects. The reason being, you know, and these side effects are mostly in younger people, less than 60 years old. It's rare to find side effects after 60. And the reason for this is, once you are infected with COVID, you already are primed. Your body knows the spike proteins. And if you, if you get vaccine and you get, you get an amnestic antibody response, which causes you to get some fever and chills, basically, it's stimulating your immune system more. So, you know, some people can get an exaggerated immune response after the, after you have the COVID. So the general recommendation is for you to wait 90 days after you get the COVID infection. And that 90 days, you already have good protective antibodies. It's very rare to see reinfection in 90 days. So you have time. You can wait 90 days and get the vaccine.
That's great.
And my understanding is that that 90-day window is specifically for patients who may have received the monoclonal antibodies or if they were positive, because they can have a heightened immune response, as you explained. But those with milder disease are, may be able to receive the vaccine sooner, as you shared, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point she made, because I think I was reading a study from Israel recently where I think there were a few healthcare workers who tested positive for COVID and they were checking the serial antibody titers. And some healthcare workers who had mild infection, the antibody titers declined even before 90 days. So that, so that's a good point. So you can actually, you know, it's reasonable to make a statement that if you had a mild infection with COVID, it's okay to get the vaccine even before the 90 days.
So here's a question that has come up many times. Weren't these vaccines made too quickly to be safe?
I think this, the technique of the vaccine has been in studies and progress for a very long period of time. I mean, this, we just applied to that scenario, but the concept of mRNA vaccines have been there for a long time. And remember, the science has progressed, you know, since the age of measles, mumps, and rubella. So, and necessity is the mother of invention, I think. I mean, this is great. I'm actually glad that it came out so quickly.
Yeah, because the timeline that I've seen is, some of the initial work on this was done in 1994. I mean, it's been close to 30 years. And about 10 or 12 years ago, they actually came up with this idea and said, well, if we have a certain virus that comes out, then we just really need to engineer it with this process. So the process has been in place for a decade. In February, they sequenced the genome of the virus. So in other words, they knew the code for the virus. And they really just plugged it into that process that's been around for more than a decade and they were able to make the vaccine that way. Now, the trials were done with tens of thousands of people. And we now have, what, close to 150 to 200 billion US experiences with this, with no deaths that we've noted. So when you look at the safety of it, we're getting day by day more and more evidence that's saying that this is, this is a safe vaccine.
It's a great point that someone once said to me, it may feel like an overnight sensation, but it was a decade in the making.
Yeah.
So it really has extremely strong science evidence and time behind it. Another question you hear quite a bit, is the vaccine safe for those who are pregnant?
I will field this question as a person who's interested in practicing full-spectrum family medicine, including obstetrics, that yes, as we recommend the flu vaccine for our pregnant patients, we are also, will recommend the COVID-19 vaccine for women who are pregnant and breastfeeding, I'd like to add. In general, we know the concept that everything that goes through moms goes to babies and this is a positive level of protection. Although pregnancy is a normal state, there is some level of immune compromise, so we want to make sure that our pregnant women have the maximum protection that they can. So moms who are pregnant and women who are interested in becoming pregnant, that's also something that has come up. The vaccine, there's no evidence that there are any problems or any abnormalities. We actually have a nurse here who not only was pregnant during COVID, but took care of COVID patients. And she has a healthy, beautiful baby boy and she's, and they are both doing well. And she's received her vaccine, I believe.
I would like to add to that. I think the CDC has started a registry sometimes back in March. So so far, I think, close to 70,000 women who received the vaccine were pregnant at the time of the vaccination. And so far, so the data is very preliminary. It has been only a month, but they have not found any side effects so far. And similar data is also coming from Canada. A lot of pregnant patients have received the vaccination and no safety concerns. And in fact, on the other hand, what we know from the studies for sure is that if a pregnant patient gets COVID, they have a higher chance of going on a ventilator, they have a higher mortality rate compared to a normal person of that age. So considering the risks and benefits, I personally would advise my family member who is a pregnant to get the vaccine. At this time, the CDC is not recommending all the pregnant patients to get the vaccine, but they are encouraging them and they are offering the vaccination to pregnant patients.
Thank you, Dr. Ali. Dr. Ellison, related, will the vaccine impact the baby for nursing moms?
So thank you. Excellent, excellent follow-up question. Again, I think the concept is similar. We know that for those women who choose and are able to breastfeed, that breastfeeding is best because it helps give some immunity to babies. And so for women who receive the vaccine, the protection that their body is getting by being exposed to the vaccine, some of that will be transferred to baby for a short period of time. Usually, we talk about the six-month window, that if women can breastfeed for at least six months, that is the crucial time in an infant's life while their immune system is developing, so that antibodies and can be transferred from mom to baby. So it's a similar concept. If mom is exposed to the vaccine, she's able to develop antibodies to COVID-19, which protect her, and while she's breastfeeding, there is likely some protection that is also transferred to babies. Now, again, we're not testing the studies at this point. We know that both Pfizer and Moderna are testing vaccines in children now. And I believe they've, they've done the 12 and up and they're going to the 11, I believe, six months to 11-year range. So again, the point is that do moms are already doing what they can to protect their children? So this is just another level of doing that same thing, especially for those infants in the first six months, who likely will not be eligible for vaccines in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Ellison. So, am I actually cured once I'm vaccinated and will I not get COVID again?
Yeah, so the vaccine, like we discussed, it's 95% to 98% effective in preventing COVID infections. It's not 100%. And vaccine is for prevention, it's not a therapeutic drug for cure. So it's only for prevention. You can still get a very mild disease, about 4% to 5% of patients can have a mild infection after getting vaccinated.
Thank you. Again, please continue to type in your questions in the Q and A or text at the cell number What about the process, the thoughts around natural immunity being better than what the vaccine provides?
I think better is an interesting word there. Some people may argue that it could be quicker, but it might be more deadly, right? So when you look at saying, natural immunity, if we were to just spread this throughout the whole population, we know that people would be more sick and there would be more deaths. There's no question about that. When you look at the vaccine, and we, we think that the immunity is relatively similar because it gives the opportunity for our immune system to recognize what that virus is and fight it off. So if you get the natural immunity, your immune system knows how to fight it off. If you get the vaccine, in a similar way, it knows how to fight it off. But we know there have been no deaths with the vaccine. So it seems to me like when you say, which is better, even though they both get to the same place in terms of immunity, my gosh, the toll and the risk is so much higher if we're to try to do this naturally.
Absolutely. And another thing to add, you mentioned the long COVID syndrome. I have a few patients who are suffering similar symptoms. So again, we talked at the beginning, over 500,000 people have died, you know, so this is very serious. We're not quite at the level of the 1918 flu pandemic, but we're very close and it is scary. So again, as Dr. George shared, when we're talking about death versus the opportunity to protect ourselves, it is really a clear contrast. But beyond that, those people who have become infected with COVID-19 naturally have some side effects, whether the headaches that you mentioned. I do have a patient that does not have their sense of smell or taste that three months after being positive. One of my patients, who is actually a nurse, is dealing with fatigue and different concerns after, after having the infection. And to my knowledge, and Dr. Ali and George can correct me if I'm wrong, we are not seeing, we have not seen those similar side effects for people who've had influenza and other infections. So I think it's really important to understand that although we have known of different coronaviruses in the past, COVID-19 is its own entity and we are seeing different and more severe effects. So for us to say, yes, let's just get everybody, you know, let them get exposed, the risk of that, not only for death, but for more complications and side effects after you recover from acute illness, is much higher and it's just not a good, good advice.
No, I agree with both of you. I mean, we have a virus with such a high mortality rate, it is, it will be unethical for me to expect to develop herd immunity just by getting natural infection. We're talking about many, many more million deaths to achieve that. So that's, I, I personally think it's unethical to think about that.
And so although we're on a better side of where we were a year ago, or several months ago, we don't want to lose sight of the severity of this pandemic, as you said, Dr. Allison. This has really been an incredible toll on us as a country, as a county. So I think we're all emphasizing, again, we're in a better place, but it's, it's coming from a very long and very tragic time as well. So that does get to the question, though, that someone has asked, well, this is almost over, it feels like, so why bother with the vaccination? We're getting better.
I don't know. I, I kind of argue against the idea that it's almost over. You know, we all want that. I mean, I, I'll be the first person to say, I can't wait till I can rip this mask off and go hug my mom. But for right now, we're, we're actually, we're just talking about this. We have 23 people in the hospital right now with COVID. We're still seeing deaths across the state of Maryland, across the country, so we're not out of the woods yet. I think it feels like we want to be there. And there's actually a, a good way to go. A one out of five Washington County residents is fantastic to have the COVID shot. But we got to get to 70 or 80% to really, for it to really count. And I, I would say that with four out of five, I'd say we were there.
Yeah, and that gets to the question I was going to help also tee up, is around how many need to be vaccinated for herd immunity? And as you know, there's no one number in this, but it's a minimum of 60%, and much closer to 80%. Depends, of course, on context, location, and many other environmental factors, but it's a minimum of 60, at least getting towards 80%. What about the thought about, why aren't there as many flu cases this year?
Yeah, I think the, you know, the answer is, is simple. The kids stayed home. And, and we were very good with our masking, hand hygiene, and social distancing. And it worked for flu. So, you know, which, 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 you know, led many people, you know, some people ask me the question, why don't we do this every year during flu season? Why don't we do, make this masking and social distancing mandatory, because it has worked so well? So, you know, I personally, you know, like the idea. So, but yeah, I think the social distancing, the school closures, and masking definitely helped for the flus here.
Right. Now, we know people still have COVID, as you've all talked about it. So Dr. George, can you explain a little bit about the monoclonal antibody therapy? Meredith Health was one of the original four sites in the state that has offered this therapy, now there's many more. What does it really mean, and how do I get to it?
So monoclonal antibody, that sounds like a pretty big word. We use these for all sorts of different diseases. We've been using them for well over 10 years, for other things like rheumatoid arthritis and other immunocompromising diseases. A monoclonal antibody just means, we create an antibody, that's a component of our immune system. It's like a little bit of a protein that recognizes something that doesn't belong in the body. And that antibody can be targeted towards a coronavirus itself. So we only use monoclonal antibodies in patients that have COVID. So this is a therapy for those that have become infected, and in the first 10 days when they're sick. So this wouldn't be something that we would go around and give to everyone that was healthy, or, you know, three or four weeks after they're infected, just those first couple of days. And what it does is it helps to decrease the body's, the likelihood that the virus will bind and replicate. And so we try to help boost the immune system a little bit. I mean, we've had pretty good results here. So when we found patients who are at risk of having severe disease, and they've been infected, this has been one therapy that has worked quite well in our community. About 1,000 doses so far?
Just about, yep. That's great. Thank you for that. And again, I encourage everyone to talk to your doctor if, if you get COVID. So one question, and again, related, is the vaccine safe if I have diabetes?
Vax, he's very safe for diabetics and immunocompromised patients. In fact, if you're a diabetic, you should get the vaccine.
Right.
It is safe across all medical problems and age groups.
Yeah, I don't think there's any condition that you would say, if you have this, you should have this. I can't think of anything off the top of my head, right?
No, no, I can't. And actually, we, we had the conversation a few, well, maybe a month ago now, about even patients who are undergoing chemotherapy and what have you. They're, they're, again, talk with your oncologist, but to my knowledge, our oncologists here are talking with their patients and having them vaccinated and what have you, giving them that added protection.
So I want to take this opportunity to also talk about vaccine appointments and how to get them. As you know, Meredith Health has been providing vaccinations since January, and will continue to do so. However, we also have here a mass vaccine site at the Hagerstown Premium Outlet, 900 Premium Outlets in the old Wolf Furniture Building. You can register either by calling 855-MD-GO-VAX, 855-MD-GO-VAX, V-A-X, or going online to There are also walk-up appointments now available, and this is now eligible for every Marylander 16 years and older. So we would encourage you to continue to look for appointments. They're doing, they did yesterday, just under 3,000 vaccinations at the Wolf Furniture. So we are all moving as fast as possible to vaccinate as many people as possible, and it's our duty to do that for our county and our community. We've done several thousand vaccinations in this area. Over two-thirds of seniors in Washington County have been vaccinated. And again, now we're beyond the 65 and older population. So we encourage you to do that. We still have a few minutes, and with our esteemed panelists, I have a couple more questions. The new thing, what about these variants we're hearing about, and what does that mean for us?
Yeah, so that's the, the hot topic for the COVID, the variants. You know, when you have a viral infection, when you have a, even for example, flu, you know, it is bound to mutate. The viruses tend to mutate a lot. But the difference between the COVID and, for example, flu, is luckily, the COVID, the SARS-CoV-2 does not cause, does not have that many mutations as the flu does. Flu does every year, and comes in a different shape. So far, we have seen very small variations and mutations with the SARS-CoV-2. The predominant one in the United States is the one that's coming from the UK, is B117. And there are other two, actually, other four strains now, that are seen, but are very small numbers. Those are the ones from South Africa, which is 135. There's one from Brazil, which is P1. And then there's a new California and New York strain. So what that means is that the coronavirus, the, the name of the coronavirus is because it has the corona, like the spikes, like crowned on, on the cell surface. So when you have mutations in the virus, the spikes change a little bit. So the, luckily, the, the one that is predominant, the UK strain, has only one or two mutations, so just a little change in the spike. So most of the vaccines are effective for the, for the UK variants, pretty much close to the regular wild virus. Whereas the other variants, luckily, that we see smaller number, like the South African and the Brazilian and the Californian, they have a little bit more number of mutations. So their spikes are a little bit more different. So the effectiveness of the vaccine is still there, but it is a little bit less than, than the UK variant. But all in all, we are, the Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson, they're, they're, they're actually, they have this pooled serum from the subjects, and they're, they have that serum, the antibodies, from, and they're checking against the, the different variants. And so far, it's, it's effective for the variants, and especially the predominant UK strain. So now, on, on another note, also note that the, the Meredith Infusion Center, we used to give BAM, line of IMAB, as a monoclonal antibody, which we recommended that you get as soon as you get the symptoms of the COVID. So if you're early in the course of the disease, there is a ready-made antibody, the BAM, which we give it to people, so it attacks the SARS, the spike proteins, and make it less aggressive. So you prevent hospital admissions in, in, in people. So now, with, with more variants, so Meredith Infusion is giving two, a combination of two monoclonal antibodies. One is the BAM, the other one is the LCVMAB, sorry, ETSIVMAB. It's E-T-E-S-I-V-A-M-A-B. So now we are giving a combination of two monoclonal antibodies, which will cover all the variant strains. So we started doing this two weeks ago.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ali. I think one last question here. Kids, what about them getting vaccinated? When is that going to happen?
So as, as we shared, the, the companies are doing their vaccine trials now in children. My understanding is that the Moderna has started vaccine trials for six months to 11-year-olds recently. And they were, both Moderna and Pfizer had been working on testing the vaccine in 12 and up, looking at efficacy. So I, I think it's coming soon, I'm sure. In their minds, they are trying to get it ready for the, this new school year, understanding that, that this has been a major impact on our children's education, and, and their mental health in particular. So as, as usual protocol, we, we, you know, start with our, our most vulnerable populations, but also make sure that it's safe to give it to them without any, you know, major side effects. So as, as soon as those, those trials are done and have been, been verified, then, I don't necessarily have a timeline, I don't know that they share that with us, but, but...
I think, Dr. Allison, obviously, it's based upon the results.
Yes.
Pfizer is moving very fast, and I think we may be a couple months away, from what it sounds like. So it's good news for everyone. Should I only be hanging out with vaccinated people? Partying with vaccinated people, Dr. George?
Well, it depends on what you're doing with them. If you're wearing a mask, if you're not vaccinated, you should certainly be wearing a mask. You should be socially distant. There's a lot, you may have seen the CDC came out a number of weeks ago, that, you know, hey, as a, as a positive result of having the vaccine, you could go back home, and if everybody in the house is vaccinated, you could probably take your masks off, and it's a little more safe. But if one person came in that wasn't vaccinated, you certainly wouldn't want that person to be wearing a mask. So the, the ultimate goal is, get vaccinated, and then you should be looking to spend time with other vaccinated people any way you can.
Great, thank you. So we're coming up on the end of our hour here. We've had well over 25, I think, questions or so, and we thank you so much. Please continue to send them in. We still have a couple minutes. I want to remind people again, where can you get the vaccine? Here, in our own county, we have the Meredith Vaccine Clinic, where it is by appointment only, and appointments are available through my chart when they're available. Also, though, we have the State of Maryland Mass Vac Site at the Hagerstown Premium Outlets, at the old Wolf Furniture Building. It is available by appointment and by walk-up, although obviously, walk-ups might take long. And you can register, or pre-register by calling 855-MD-GO-VAX, or visit www-one-stop-md.gov/pre-registration. So we want to, again, emphasize, as you've heard tonight, please get your vaccine. It is important, it is safe, it's protecting you, it's protecting all of us, and we've had a very trying pandemic. And I don't know, pandemics can be not trying, but it is most severe, and we're getting to a better place, well better than we were a year ago, and we need to keep doing it together as a community. So anything, final thoughts from Dr. Ali, Dr. Allison, and Dr. George for the community?
I would just encourage everyone to, to keep asking questions, keep seeking information. We've done multiple of these opportunities to have people answer questions, because we really do want you to be able to make informed decisions about your health. We're here to answer, you have, you know, experts, both of my teachers are in front of me, but we do what we can to, to reach out and, and share this information, so that we can save lives and allow you to, to live and, and be safe. So, you know, please get vaccinated if you have other questions or concerns. The information is provided to ask questions, again, and share with your friends if they're not able to hear this. They can listen and maybe get some of their questions answered.
I'd say, it's safe, it's easy, and gets us to where we all want to go.
Thank you, Dr.
And I, I especially want to appeal my healthcare workers who have not been vaccinated so far, for whatever reasons. Please, it's still not too late. We have administered about 170 million doses in the United States. I mean, this is a very safe vaccine. My personal opinion is, you should just go ahead and get it. So please, you know, not just for the, for yourself, but for the patients and the communities. I would, I would love to see, you know, 100% vaccination for my healthcare workers. That's my dream.
Thank you, Dr. Ali. And I can tell you personally, you can trust Dr. George, Dr. Allison, and Dr. Ali. They are truly individuals who are based in incredible scientific evidence and have an incredible experience, and you can trust them. Always talk to your physician if you have any questions. Please do that, it's critical. This is about supporting all of us. We're going to take care of our community, and we got to do it one person at a time. And our healthcare heroes don't want to be vulnerable. So you want to protect them, as we want to protect you. So again, on behalf of Meredith Health, we just want to thank you for signing in and hearing, and answering, and asking questions. Please continue, and do not hesitate to reach out to us or to your physician. We want to make sure everyone is vaccinated as fast as possible, as many as possible, and we will do that. We're privileged to work with the Washington County Health Department and all our partners to do this in the state of Maryland and in Washington County. Thank you again for joining us, and have a great rest of the evening.